Please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to this committee of the whole meeting, January 10. We'll start with a call to order. We would like to, sorry, we're going to call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM by formally recognizing that we are meeting on Aboriginal land that has been inhabited by indigenous people from the beginning. We respectfully acknowledge that the municipality of Brighton is located on the Mississauga, on Anishna Back Territory and is the traditional territory of the Mississauga. The Council of the Municipality of Brighton respectfully acknowledges that the Mississauga Nation are the collective stewards and caretakers of these lands and waters in perpetuity, and that they continue to maintain this responsibility to ensure their health and integrity for generations to come. Second, we're going to move to the approval of the agenda. Now, I do have a little bit of an amendment. And it's that, and I will need a mover and a seconder for this, that the January 2000, sorry, January 10, 2022 Committee of the Whole Budget Meeting Agenda be amended to remove 6.1 capital budget deliberations and add Section 6.1 Review of 2022 Budget and add 6.2 Operational Budget Continuance. Just a little bit more clear as to what we're going to be talking about tonight. Can I get a mover and a seconder?
Move that.
Council Anderson and Mayor Ostrander.
We will have to do a vote.
A recorded vote. I'm just making some notes here.
Okay.
So, all in favor? Show hands.
I'll do a quartered revote.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So I'll start with Council Ron Anderson.
Yes.
Council Doug LeBlanc.
Yes.
Council Emily Rowley.
Yes.
Councilor Mary Tagman.
Yes.
Mayor Brian Ostrander. And Deputy Mayor Laura Connect.
Yes.
And that's Carrie.
Next, are there any declarations of pecuniary interest? None? And we have no delegations. Do we have any citizens comment?
None. No, there is none.
Thank you. So next, I think what we'll do is we'll open up the floor for 6.1 to our Director of Finance, Linda Whitfield, and she can just give us a bit of an overview of what we've talked about in the past and what we've agreed to, and then we'll move on to the operating budget.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So I sent out late this afternoon a copy of notes to council on where we have been since the beginning of the budget deliberations. So we started these deliberations on November 4th, and then we met again on the 22nd and 29th of November. And we were able to successfully recommend to council and council, in turn, pass our capital budget. So we are now working forward our RFPs and RFQs and tenders so that we can start getting that capital budget moving.
Yeah.
On the 29th, we also had a committee of the whole, when we deliberated, the grant and aid applications. We added 147,476.
Linda, sorry, your speaker isn't picking up your voice very well. You actually have to talk directly to, towards your computer because we're losing you a little bit.
Okay, let me see here. I'll turn it up a bit.
Okay.
Is that better?
Yeah, it's when you turn your head that we're losing you a little bit, just so you know.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at my notes a little bit. Um, so I was, I was talking about our last committee of the whole, we deliberated, council deliberated on the grant and aid applications and added 147,476 dollars to the budget, which was our estimate going into that budget meeting. So the current tax increase is 1.89%. And that didn't change from our last, from the notes on our last budget. County council has passed a budget now that will provide a 3.1% increase after growth. So in other words, a 3.1% tax increase. If the education rate stays the same as it was in 2021, the municipal tax increase stays at 1.89%, we can expect that the average increase to Brighton taxpayers will be a blended 2.12% as the budget sits right now. And other than that, I really don't have any update for you.
Do any members of council have questions for Director Whitfield right now? Council Anderson?
I know we're just going into operations, but operational budget, but are we satisfied that we have that over to 2%? And I'd just like to hear what everybody thinks. Is there any way of, at this point of making any? We've already passed that, that capital, right? The capital budget.
Capital has been passed and we are moving into operational now. We've discussed it, some parts of operational, and we may be able to do some adjustments along the way. We can certainly revisit some of the capital, but, but we did agree at the last meeting to go ahead with that.
Yeah, I, I don't want to hold it up. I just, maybe going into the operation, we can have that in back of our mind a little bit.
Sure. Linda, did you have anything to add to that?
Well, I could recommend the capital budget to council, and council did approve that capital budget. And so the capital budget itself should not be altered unless council wants to do that. That would be yet another recommendation and another meeting to council. And bear in mind that staff are already putting out the RFPs and tender. Yes, the, the increase at the county level of 3.11 is driving us up just a little bit. Bear in mind.
That's right, yeah.
Bear in mind that this municipality is still at 1.89% with what we've presented so far. So we are keeping the numbers down as much as possible. And as we go through the operating budget, I don't know that there's a lot of room, wiggle room in there, and there may be a couple of recommendations to actually increase it slightly. So we might have to look at maybe the extra money that you had in the budget for grants and aid. You've added, you set aside for future requests an amount of $12,476. That would be something that you could easily cut from the budget and not have any more grants for, for the year. And we could talk about maybe some reserves for some projects that, that may assist. But we, we'll have to go through the deliberations first with operating and see where we are.
Thanks. And so tonight, what we're going to do, we're just going to go page by page, ask questions and just get a general understanding of what the operational budget is. I don't think we're going to make any decisions on operations tonight. So if everyone's ready or if anyone has any other questions, let me know. Otherwise, we'll just kind of head into that and, and just start reviewing it all. Is everyone good with that? So operational budget starts on page 25. The first is general government. And we'll just go page by page. I'm going to assume everyone's read it, so we're not going to go read through again. It's just basically an opportunity to ask questions of the director if needed, or any concerns you might have about any of the areas. Lot of these things, lot of the items listed in these operational budget areas have been items that we've discussed in the past year, and they've been added to the budget. And we've made decisions on it in council already to add these things to the budget, any of these new items. So just so we're clear on that as we're going through, we have discussed a lot of this before. There's nothing, I don't think, too surprising in here at all. So anyway, we'll start with general government. And this is presented to us by the Finance Department and the Clerks Department. We see a total increase of 16.94%. That generally, generally has to do with, I believe, more staffing than anything. Is there any questions from council about the general government? Council Rowley?
Thank you. And you might have in part answered my question, Deputy Mayor, but yes, I see that we have a significant increase in the CAO slash Clerks Department. So can I assume then, as per your explanation, that that's all staffing?
Well, we'll let Linda comment.
Almost 200,000. Thank you. It is mainly staffing, and council may have discussed or did discuss a contingency amount of $80,000 to be added for future staffing considerations in that CAO budget, and I think that's why you're seeing that there as such an increase.
I think that relates to our discussions in closed regarding the organizational chart, I believe, and changes that were needed. I'm seeing a few people nod heads, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this area? Any concerns that, at this point? I don't see any. Are we ready to move to the next section? So next is fire services. Presented us, to us by Chief Jim Smith. And here we just have a 0.87% increase, very small increase for the year. And the explanations are all there on the page. Any questions there for the fire chief? Go ahead, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. My, my only question is, I ask fairly frequently, and that's with 38 volunteer firefighters, is, is that contingency enough to protect the municipality?
Currently at this time, yes. We'll look at increasing, once we find out our new numbers, hopefully in May from Stats Cam. We can figure out our numbers from. once we find out our new numbers, hopefully in May from Stats Cam, we can figure out our numbers from there, but currently, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. We're going to be done in five minutes. Let's move to the, well, police services operational budget. Obviously, this isn't one we have as much control over, although we do, everyone's want to talk about enhanced policing. But is there any questions for anyone on this or any discussion? No comments or questions from council? Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
You, you guys, you're on the mayor and you are on the police services board. And I know the mayor has spoken to the OPP regarding the enhancement discussion and that type of thing. There's been discussion about, with the growth and the increase in neighborhoods, the increase in, in building, the increase in population. We've sort of been a little stagnant on the amount of coverage we do have. And we were not even talking about enhancement at this point. We might be talking about, do we have enough? I don't see a lot of problems in our community, thank goodness. But does the police feel comfortable with the, the number of service people they have for our community? Perhaps the mayor can answer from that discussion he had. I know he had a discussion regarding that.
If I may Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. The discussion, as you know, Counselor Anderson, the discussion I had with the detachment commander, the inspector, was one around our conversation about enhancement. And his suggestion was that with the changes they're making and how they deploy staff would not be necessary for enhancement in, in municipality break. So he was comfortable with the level of service that the OPP is providing and thought that we would see an increase in certain levels of enforcement, specifically traffic enforcement with those changes. And anecdotally, I can say I've certainly seen more cruisers on the road since that conversation. I don't know whether it's because I'm hyper, hyper aware of that conversation now, or whether in fact it's because I'm seeing more cruisers.
I have to agree with you Mayor. Thank you for that. I've seen it in where the roads that I travel, I've seen it and and I know their response has been fairly, their, their response, I've had people let me know that they've had called about done that follow-up on calling when they see something, speeders or whatever, and that seems to work. I've been working a little bit because the police seem to maybe tracking that a little closer now and actually following up on some. I don't, they can't get there right away, but I think they're following up and checking those neighborhoods out a little bit more. And I see them more often myself, so I'm a little bit more satisfied now too. But I'm just saying, we're talking for the next year. And look what we're going through again with COVID. We don't know where the summer's going. As long as we still have in place some flexibility, if, if we lead into the summer with a you know, the park, you know, issues, all those similarities we had the two years. Last year, I think we did fairly well with how things were managed with parking and things like that, but I don't know, as long as we have some flexibility to beef it up somewhere if we need it.
Well, I, I don't think we have flexibility to just beef it up when we feel like it. I, I believe, once it's said, it's said. If we want to beef it up, we beef it up for years in advance, even the next year, do we not? Go ahead, Mayor.
I'm referring, I'm referring to not knowing where we're heading into this, this COVID, where it's going, where it's going to end. And should we need to have to help supervise some of those as they, as we come back out of this, this, remember what we went through before? Folks would travel here from other communities and do their recreation here, and we weren't quite ready for it, I don't think. But I'm just, I'm just putting it out there. This is a time to talk about this stuff, so I just see what everybody thinks. Is everybody satisfied? That's fine.
Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I concur. If it is a, an OPP enhancement, that's a discussion we need to have now and something that would cost us significant dollars and cents, as we all know. But if it's bylaw enforcement concern, which I think is where Counselor Anderson is headed here, we can have that discussion when we get to bylaw enforcement and just find out whether or not we've got that enhanced or those enhanced enforcement measures contemplated in this budget as we did last year. Which I, I think saw some pretty proactive bylaw enforcement during the summer, especially if parking was related. And I know some people who were complaining weren't very happy when they were the ones being fined, unfortunately, but that's what happens when we enforce on a proactive basis our parking enforcement and other, other bylaws. So I think that's where Counselor Anderson's heading, and I think that's where his question lies. And I think that's a conversation we can have in about eight pages.
Yeah, and I think there's
Thank you.
Almost, excuse me, if I could just add one more thing. I almost brought up something else, but it is more to do with bylaws, so and, and some items that we need to deal with. So I'll bring that up at that time. So let's leave this, I'm fine with this right now.
Thank you. Counselor LeBlanc?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I've been just watching after about, I'd say about four months ago, the mayor said to watch what the OPP were doing. And so I have. And just on my stretch of the road and highway too, I'm going to the plastic plant and back. In probably 20 years, if I saw two, two cars being stopped, that was about it. In the last four months, I've probably seen about 30. So how many more have been stopped that I haven't noticed, but just in my time of traveling? So there has been quite a significant change with the OPP present on that, especially from the high school all the way down to Boaz Road. Anyway. I just thought, so there has been a noticeable difference there. Thank you.
Any more discussion around the police contract? Okay, thanks. We can move. Next, we have cemeteries and health services operating budget. So for health services, those are the, the buildings that we own that are used by doctors that we lease back out again. Any questions on that area? We'll start with that first. Go ahead, Mayor Osterlander.
I'm actually just going to declare a community area interest with regard to cemeteries that we're here and that's in that I am a member of the board, United Church, and we own and operate the Hilton Cemetery. So if any discussion comes up there, I will refuse myself.
Thank you. So any questions about our health services? Go ahead, Counselor Tadman? Oh, you're muted.
There we go.
Now?
Yep.
No, I, I'm just really glad that we're, we've taken the initiative to completely do the roof health service center. I think it's important to always look after our buildings. And I think that's all coming through reserves, isn't it Linda? For, for their root, that's not to I, I, I thought I read that afternoon, but I read so many numbers. I'm not sure now how that was being paid for.
Through you Deputy Mayor, that is part of the capital budget that we discussed a while ago.
Yeah.
Approved. So my recollection of that right now, I'm not sure. I'll get back to you.
Yeah, it's okay. I, I'm pretty sure I, I read where it was, it was being on from, from reserves and whatever else. But I'm glad it's being done and we should be taking care of our buildings. That's all I wanted to say about that.
Thank you. And, and I for one, am glad that we're able to purchase some of these buildings and have them available for doctors because we know how much of a need there is. And it just seems to be that that's what we need to do nowadays, even though there's a bit of a cost to it. But we seem to be there was some concern when we first did it, but it seems to be that it's going okay. So I do appreciate that, that we've been able to take that initiative. Any other questions from member of council on that? Okay, so it does show a decrease. It just has to do with with the one building there, the the Brighton Health Services Center, correct? Is that the one that decreased? No, it was the the expenditures on there, so.
If I may Deputy Mayor, it actually is because the grants and aid weren't included in the first draft budget. So for hospitals and cemeteries.
That's in cemeteries, yes, okay.
And, and hospital donations.
Right. And where do the hospital donations end up? In health services expenditures, is that why?
Yes.
Okay, so, and do you have in front of you what we decided to do with the, the hospital expenditures, the total?
Yes, I do. We just did two hospitals this year, 32,500.
So there's an additional 32,500 there. And then, so if we're ready to move into the, the, so that we have the Mount Hope Cemetery here, the other cemeteries haven't been added into this budget here on this page, but we did discuss that at our last meeting. I think that was 23,000 there, 23,050.
Correct.
So that needs to be added into the cemeteries. So we've already discussed that. So all we have here is the Mount Hope. Do we know what Mount Hope was last year? It's hard for us to compare because we don't have the others with included with it to compare.
Cemeteries for 2022 are 48,913 dollars, so an increase of about 800 dollars.
Okay, that's great. Any questions? On that? Next, we're moving to the public works operating budget. It's showing a 0.17% increase. And we have the explanations there. Director Parkinson, is he here? Yes. Did you want to, or sorry, does anyone have any questions for Director Parkinson on this area? No questions from council? Sir, Counselor Rowley?
Thank you Mayor. Just want to talk about sidewalks, Preston, as always. Was the contract that we had with the company this year as well, that's the one we used yesterday, was that, was that contract completely fulfilled?
Through you Deputy Mayor, yes, last year's contract was completely spent for all the accessibility work that we did for tack plates and then sections of sidewalk that we improved by widening them.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor LeBlanc?
Through you Deputy Chair, Mayor. In your public work budgets for storm waters expenditures, you get 284,000. Is there a a program where this is going to be spent on which ones you're going to do?
Through you Deputy Mayor, yes, we've, we're following the recommendations in the Stormwater Master Plan. The only exceptions for next year is we've switched maintenance programs for the Lucas Pond with the Roos Pond because there's the, quite a good possibility that we can eliminate the Roos Pond through some development going on adjacent to that. So instead of wasting or spending those maintenance dollars, we moved over to Lucas Pond in hopes that we can eliminate that Roos Pond from the system altogether and just have that savings overall. So it'll be determined next year in coordination with the development that's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are you, are you satisfied that we're keeping up with maintenance with this budget? Are there areas, not that I want to add to the budget, I just want to make sure that we're actually keeping up. Those are the things we hear about as well, is maintaining. Mr. Parkinson?
Through you Deputy Mayor, it's always a concern with me too, sir, because we're primarily service delivery to the residents. So we're constantly looking at how we can do things better, how we can do things more economically. So this next year, we're going to be focusing on some logistical improvements. Improving how, how we get to and from job sites. I want to see us acting the way the ambulance and the fire departments do, you know, you head straight to the site as quick as possible and shortest as possible to try to save some fuel and some extra mileage on vehicles. That's why you'll notice that our line for fuel has been increased because I, I hope to save some money there as we try to improve things through, you know, even fuel management such as during winter operations, we need equipment idling so that it's ready to go and can be used when they come back to fill the machines up. So I'm looking at putting garage door openers on the two shops so that they can come and go quickly from the garage, bring it inside, shut it off, and then while it's sitting there for two or three hours, it's warm and ready to go when they come back to redeploy or to fill up. Just little things like that, because there's an environmental impact that goes along with that. We can save some fuel and save some vehicles idling for sure. The one thing I would like to add to the storm water budget is 18,000 dollars, and that would be dedicated to the Brighton by the Bay facility. So it would be reinstatement of the work we did there this year and then a planting program similar to what we accomplished in the Harbor Point facility, just to beautify and to make that a little more little more appealing to the public and a little more environmentally friendly.
So that's not currently in this budget?
No, it is not. From the time this was prepared, we were still working on that site. So we've closed it out for the year. We spent our budget from last year, so the request would be 18,000 dollars we added for, specifically for the Brighton by the Bay facility for reinstatement and plantings program.
So from council, is there an appetite from council to add that 18,000? Perhaps we should discuss it a little bit now. We don't have to decide on it tonight, but we should get an idea. Counselor Anderson, I see your hand up.
Well, that's going to the capital situation now. Right Preston?
Through the Deputy Mayor, no, that, that is operational because it's maintenance work. So we've had to dig it out and remove sediment that was in the pond and some growth. So we just want to clean the pond up, reshape it around the edges, seed it, and then do plantings.
So that it is maintenance, so it's operational. So we're discussing it with this area here.
Okay, it's not, had a, had a flavor of a bit of capital involved, but it is.
Thoughts from council on that? Counselor LeBlanc and then Counselor Rowley?
I, you Deputy Mayor, I have no problem in putting the, the trees, the 18,000 of this year into this budget. The question that I had, as I asked the question before, when we look at the ponds is that because when I look at DCA for the Brighton by the Bay Pond and how many homes it was allotted for, it has never was amended. I wanted to know, is, is in this expenditure, if they're going to, if they're going to look at it, if it meets the 100-year reign event?
Through you Deputy Mayor. Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. If you want to answer, I'm not sure that has to do with this budget. Are you, are you asking in relation to this budget, Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes. If the money is going to be expended for, if it's part of it.
Okay, go ahead.
We do not have any money in the budget for evaluating any existing storm ponds that way, other than maybe some engineering services dollars that would be a typical year-over-year expenditure. But there's nothing specifically designated for for that work that the council just mentioned.
Thank you. Counselor Rowley?
Thank you Mayor, or Deputy Mayor, excuse me. Just, just wondering, Preston, if you're looking for this money, have you come up with an idea where we're going to get from it, get it from? Or Linda, do we have an idea? Or is this just something we're going to just add?
I'll defer that answer to the Director of Finance.
Well, for now, I would think that we would just add it and maybe look at ways of well, looking at the whole storm water budget in
well, looking at the whole stormwater budget in in its entirety, and then looking maybe at a way to reduce your overall budget by taking some money from your reserves, that's the only other choice you have.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, I guess we should get an idea from council, whether you believe that's something we should add, and then, and then whether or not we want to do, I mean, there's the difference between whether this is something we need to do and whether and how it's going to be funded. If it's something we need to do, then, you know, that's something, that's one question. I'm wondering if these, we have a number of ponds, if this maintenance, is it added on a regular basis so that we're continually doing this maintenance to ponds on a rotating basis? Is this something we've looked at, or is this something new?
Well, this is part of the Stormwater Master Plan, so that's the multi-year plan that we're following. Every year, there's, there's work to do in different areas, and we're just trying to target that every year to bring them up to a better quality, I guess you could say.
Okay, thank you. I think Mayor Oshander, your hand was up.
Can I chime in and say I'm in favor of adding eighteen thousand dollars to the budget to fix the pond up properly when the, when the project is totally complete for the spring? And I guess I'd ask staff when we circle back to all of this next, or week after next, if there's a way to fund it other than the tax dollars, great, if not, then take a look at it.
Okay, any other comments from members on council on the eighteen thousand? Councilor Anderson?
I agree with it. I think we're playing a little bit of catch-up here anyhow, so I think it's got to get done, and I think it's time we did it, so I agree to the eighteen thousand.
Okay, so Linda, if you're able to add that in, and then so that when we talk the next time, we know that it's been added in, and if there's any, we can discuss ways to fund it, or whether we're going to add it to the taxpayer base. Any other questions for Public Works at this point? Councilor LeBlanc?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, for the Director of Public Works, what you see roadway maintenance and roadway maintenance, nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand one-hundred-and-eighty-three dollars. Does that have anything to do with brushing or dishing? Because I see you have bridges and culverts otherwise, and because I was just wondering, because the first year we were on council, we did a hundred and forty a hundred and forty kilometers a road, and I haven't seen that much yet done in the next, the last two years.
Through the Deputy Mayor, sorry, I wasn't sure if the council was done or if my screen froze again. Yes, it does include money for brushing in there, because we now do that in-house. They've been up for the last couple of weeks, but yes, production is is far behind where it was when we were contracting it out. But we're hoping to improve that next year, especially if this weather keeps up a little bit, because we've been up for the last week and a half getting some roads done.
Okay, Councilor Rowley, did I see your hand up?
I did, I did, thank you, and it's not to do with roads, but it is to do with traffic lights. And I realized that last year we did some upgrades and replaced traffic lights at Highway Two and Main or Prince Edward slash Highway Thirty. Was there not any, some conversation last year about that we would have to be replacing some of the other traffic lights?
Through the Deputy Mayor, that's correct. We have, I believe, thirty-five thousand dollars in our budget overall for maintenance and replacement light heads, but the, with the accessibility coming in and the ability or the need to have audible chimes at all of our intersections, it's going to be part of a larger project that we're going to try to target in twenty-three and twenty-four. And that's, that would install audibles at all of our intersections and crossings to bring them up to the accessibility standard. So in the meantime, we'll just do repairs to get us through until we can do those larger projects, because the bulk of them will involve more detailed and greater capacity control cabinets to account for the audible devices so that we can be compliant, because the others systems are too dated to accommodate those.
Okay, so this year, the seven and change that you have in there is just basically to maintain what we have with hoping to replace in twenty-three and twenty-four.
That's right, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilor Anderson, did I see your hand up, and then Councilor LeBlanc?
I got an answer to that conversation, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor LeBlanc?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor, for the Director of Public Works. To add on to Councilor Rowley's question, when it comes to streetlights and traffic lights, one of the points that was brought up in council was the crossing, where to go from the sidewalk from, coming from Cedar Street over to Prince Edward Street and across into the industrial park, because it's a curb with a lot of traffic. Has, is there anything in here to put a crosswalk in there or some type of stoplight so that kids going to school can cross safely?
I believe, Mayor, did you want to respond to that?
I do, that's something that we should consider asking for in the EA for the Prince Edward Street reconstruction that the county is endeavoring to undertake through twenty-twenty-two. So if all of your friends and all of my friends who live along Prince Edward and Cedar could chine into that EA process and say that they'd like upgraded crosswalks and signalization at that road, it would probably benefit everybody at the end of the day, Councilor LeBlanc.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else on Public Works?
Laura, I'm sorry, and this is just directed to Director Whitfield. Street, street lighting. A few years ago, we went with a much more efficient system with LED streetlights. Are they paying for themselves?
I don't have the exact calculations right now, because it's been a number of years. I'd have to look back and see what our hydro bills were like back then and get back to council by email. As I recall, at the time, once we had all of the streetlights adjusted, we were saving a substantial dollar. Bear in mind, they're not metered, and so they go by the type of lights, and then they estimate what the hydro would be, and that's how we're billed per light. At the same time, you're adding streetlights all the time to the, to the network with all the new subdivisions, and so it's kind of hard to compare apples to apples in this case. But the hydro costs per streetlight went down at the time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Parks and Rec. We have the budget in front of us and explanations. We have a point, sorry, that's, six-point-one-eight percent increase. Any questions for the Director of Parks and Rec, Jim Miller? Councilor Rowley?
Thank you. Jim, I believe you received an email this week from the DBIA regarding the bathrooms in Memorial Park. I don't know how that's going to fit within your budget or how we're as there is some cost sharing, although in some cases, you know, the bathrooms are not just used for the shoppers in downtown, they're used by the city as a whole, so I maybe like some of your thoughts on that. The other, the other thing, I'm hoping this is the right place to bring it up. We did speak that council or that the municipality might partner with the DBIA regarding some monies for Christmas lighting next year, so we can enhance what we have in the park. I believe that the ask was approximately five thousand dollars, and because it was not a great amount, Linda, I believe you told me that it needed to go under operation, so is this the department that that would fall into then? So I'll start with that, I might have some more, we'll start with that first, thank you.
Good question. We have discussed that before. Has this been, that five thousand been added to this budget? Or to any budget at this point?
Jim Miller, I guess I'll speak for you. Through you, Deputy Mayor. No, we didn't have the five thousand yet, and that was brought up during the budget deliberations, and we said we would discuss it today. At this meeting, and then the other part was, the DBIA has requested to have the bathrooms open all year, and Jim and I did some calculations today, the DBIA has offered twenty-five hundred dollars toward the cost of that. And we calculated it would cost seventy-five hundred, so five thousand net. So that, those two items would add ten thousand dollars to the budget.
Okay, so what you're saying is if we were to council wanted to spend five thousand on Christmas lights and then another five thousand for the bathrooms to be open year-round, this is where we would add it here at this time, correct?
Go ahead, Jim.
It would be, it would be seventy-five hundred, but we are taking into consideration the twenty-five hundred donation from the DBIA.
Okay, I understand, and then the contribution for the Christmas lights would be five, so seventy-five hundred plus the five thousand is what we're technically adding, minus the twenty-five hundred dollar donation. So council, is that something we can maybe discuss or hear comments on? Councilor Rowley, did you have more to add to that?
I would, I'd like to, I I'd really like a breakdown of the seventy-five hundred, because I think when we had some discussions earlier, that number seems to be quite high. Are you talking seventy-five hundred for the whole year, or just seventy-five hundred for the three months that that the bathrooms aren't open from January, February, and March? That seems high to me.
It would be five months, because normally, traditionally, we close the end of October. We do open them for Remembrance Day, but essentially, they're closed then, so you'd be looking November, December, January, February, March, so five months. But they'd be closed, we would open them in April.
So we're looking at seventy-five hundred to add the five months so that they can be open year-round. Comments from council? Councilor LeBlanc and then Councilor Anderson?
I tend to agree with Councilor Rowley that if we're going to have public washrooms, they should be open twenty-four months a year, I mean, twelve months a year. They should be.
That's a long year, but I agree with you.
So we'll do it fifteen thousand, we'll pay for two years, Deputy Mayor.
I, I, I think we should be supporting this a hundred percent as far as the municipality. We have, what, one washroom open in the entire municipality for the public? So the stores are having difficulty, you're taking care of people wanting to use their washrooms, restaurants are closed. You're, this is going to be going on for most of the year. I think there'll be funding available for us to offset this. I don't think we need to spend a lot of time thinking about providing a service as we have built good facilities. You know, that's, they're great facilities, and it's the only place in town that you can publicly go to use a washroom, so I think we should be picking up the tab for that totally. And that cost sounds a little, a little high, but Jim, you know better than I do as far as maintaining those washrooms, but and and the other item was the deck, the decorations in the park, I think we haven't supported the DBI, we call it the DBI, it's the entire municipality that we're, we're contributing to when we enhance the quality of Christmas lights or our downtown or anywhere in the municipality, and I think five thousand dollars is a, and you don't get much for that nowadays, so I think five thousand dollars is a small price to so if we have to increase the budget because of that, I'm going to, I say we need to do that, we don't have to go looking for money for that, I don't think.
Any other comments from council? Members of council, Councilor Tadman?
Yeah, I totally agree that the washroom should be open year-round, and, you know, we we're not fair weather people using washrooms, we need to use them all year-round, and I think it's a public service that is very much needed, and I don't have problems with five thousand for lights, but I know other communities, and especially Quinney West, has raised money through contributions so that we can have a real, really spectacular display, and maybe somebody would like to take that up as as a project that they would like to head, and I know that there, there would be people that would like to donate to something like that, so our initial five thousand might be stretched into something quite, quite fantastic.
Thank you, I think that's actually a great idea. We have a beautiful park downtown, and five thousand doesn't go very far, but we certainly could light that park up and it could be beautiful, and I think maybe some fundraising or some projects along the way, whether it be the DBIA or through, through the municipality, just, you know, having either local businesses or people wanting to contribute, I think that would be a great idea. Any other comments from council on that? Councilor Rowley?
Thank you. Would some of our COVID relief fund, would some of the dollars to keep the bathrooms open fall underneath an initiative like that? Just to kind of offset some of the costs that we're not just taking it from the taxpayers? I'm not, I'm not sure exactly what we have, what kind of dollars we have in the, in that reserve or whatever we call it, but I was wondering if something like this to keep bathrooms open all the time, because like you say, the storekeepers can't allow you know, just the general public to use, and would, would be able to use some of those funds for that.
Director Whitfield, is that a possibility for this year?
For this year, but if it's an ongoing program, we'll have to look at other ways to fund it.
Yeah, for sure, and we certainly do want it to be an ongoing program, but you know, if we're able to make it for this year, that certainly would help. Whose hand did I see earlier? Is it Councilor LeBlanc?
Yes, Deputy Mayor, what it is, it has to be on the lighting, five thousand dollars, I think I remember the first year when they bought the first trees and angels. They were quite substantial in cost, like, does Council Rowley know how many ornaments or what they could decorate with, with five thousand dollars? Is it enough?
It's, it's not a lot. I should say the two new decorations that hang on the stage itself, I think they were between six and eight thousand dollars just for those two pieces, so that kind of gives you an idea. You know, we have to, we maintain and have to replace some of the snowflakes and the things that are on the streetlights. Some of the, some of the other decorations in the park, some were disposed of this year, you know, they're kind of budget-friendly, that they don't, they don't last for very long, so yeah, five thousand won't do a lot, but you know what, partnering with the DBIA, we're certainly willing to spend some more money this year as well, and I, I do believe, once, you know, once the DBIA sees the support from council, we are going to be looking very soon so that this year we're not behind the eight ball, and at least there will be some you know, last year there were just no inventory either to get anything, so when we wanted to kind of ramp up a bit, we weren't able to, so hopefully this year we will look at our budget as well. I think we have ten thousand plus in our budget to spend for decorations, so you know, it'll give, it'll give us a little bit of a bump up, but like I say, we want to start soon this year as inventory, we couldn't get anything last year, we couldn't even get a tree. So, yeah, hopefully we can get this done sooner than later, and we will present we will present what we put together to council once we have it put together, thank you.
Thanks. Mayor Oshander?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, so I, I would call this two good initiatives with a willing partner, and I'd be hard-pressed to not support both of them. I've been a long supporter of more, more festive lights in Memorial Park over Christmas, and I will continue to support that. And five thousand dollars currently doesn't go very far anymore, but it's a good investment for Memorial Park at Christmas time. And to Councilor LeBlanc's twenty-four-month year, I believe that's called a COVID year now, by the way, just, I think you are absolutely accurate, there are twenty-four months in a COVID year.
I should have said twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, twelve months a year.
We know what you meant. So Director Whitfield? We know what you meant. So Director Wittenfield, it looks like we want to add those two items. And this, this week, that's what we'll be doing. And then we'll have to take a look at, you know, what our bottom line will be and we'll discuss it. But you know, some of these initiatives just seem to make sense. Anything else in Parks and Rec that we want to discuss tonight? Counselor Rowley?
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions and I'm not sure if it's, if this is the time and the place. I was wondering if we could review the Parkland reserves. Are we allowed to ask that question here now?
Is that a budget item? Which item is it?
I'm looking at Park, I'm looking at our reserve sheet. Are we allowed to add that tonight? Or do you want to talk about that another time?
Um.
Well, I just send my question to Linda and then maybe she can answer all of us.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, I'll do that.
But what, what's the question? I'd like to know what the question is. Maybe we'd all like to answer.
Um, just looking at our Parkland Reserve, I mean, we get money cash in lieu, right? From individual, from developers, from individual lots, blah, blah, blah. It seems like we are only increasing by $5,000 through this year. I know there's nine. Is that all we collect in a year for all of these lots that we just collect? It seems like with all of the development that we've had this year, that, that's not a lot of money.
I can speak to that.
Director Wittenfield, did you?
I'm here for a minute.
Mr. Walsh, go ahead.
Sure. So yeah, the Planning Act allows us to collect a payment in lieu of Parkland. So in instances where development is advised to provide Parkland by the way, by way of a severance or a subdivision, that they are to contribute either payment in lieu of that Parkland an amount of 5% of the value of the land or 2% in the event that the land development is a commercial undertaking. There's also opportunity to collect Parkland dedication under site plan control. Currently, we aren't collecting anything under site plan control because you don't really have a Parkland dedication by law passed. So that is, it was discussed under the senior management committee this, this morning, in fact, that on the to-do list for this year is to bring in, bring forward to council for its consideration of Parkland dedication bylaws so that we can fully realize the, the dedications that are warranted under the existing application system of subdivision of land, but also under site plan control. And that, if council may recall, under the fees and charges by law, there was a new item in there saying that it would be based on appraisal, which is a common practice among many municipalities. Right now, I think for a severance, we're like maybe $500 and that's translated over to subdivisions as well. So yes, that's not very much in relation to the actual value of the land when the act says collect 5%. So we'll be bringing forward a bylaw to activate those provisions under the Planning Act more to, more to its fullest.
Thank you, thank you for that, Mr. Walsh. I, I do have one more question regarding parks. May I ask?
Go ahead.
Thank you. And under, there again, I'm looking at another page here too, under the development charges, there is $175,096 being transferred out of our parks. May I ask, I don't know if we spoke about it, if I forgot, may I ask what those dollars are being used for?
Who would like to answer that question? Okay.
Put things to the right feet here.
Sorry, Linda, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm, I'm just trying to carryover project from 2021 to 2022, we're going to transfer it out of reserve.
Linda, I'm certainly patient to wait. You can send it in an email if you like.
Yeah, because it had to do with capital. Sorry, it didn't have to do with operating. So I wasn't prepared for all of that.
Yeah.
Tonight.
I can, I can wait. Maybe at your convenience, you could just send an email.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on the operating budget for Parks and Rec? Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. When it comes to trails and trails and waterfront, waterfront is zero, trails is 10,000. But when I go over to capital and I look at trails, it is zero. But then when I go on to page 56, it says, replace Toby's Trail Bridge for 5,000. And the trail extension for 50,000, a total of 55. So I have a problem where the, how did it cross? How did he? How did they come up with 10,000 when on the other side is 55? Or maybe somebody can give me an answer later on on it.
Mr. Miller, the 10,000 trails, what is that for? On the operating budget? I believe it's for, go ahead.
Budget 10,000 is a transfer to reserves for trails. In the capital budget, $55,000 is being funded in part from DCs and in part from the transfer from reserves. So it nets out to zero. I think that's what Counselor LeBlanc asked.
Okay, thank you.
Right, so that makes sense. So the 10,000 is just part of, part of that budget being transferred out. Okay.
I may, yeah, that 55,000 is in capital because, you know, if we get a project underway this year, we have some money for it. And we are putting in money into reserves in the operating so that we can continue to build that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So next is our library board. I think as of this, we didn't actually have their budget yet. Do we have the library's budget yet? Linda?
Yes, we do have their, their budget and we did increase their, increase our budget already to, to recognize that. And that was done when we were working on, I'm just going to go back and look for the. Change to the library budget was over and above what we had in the first draft was $7,873.
So we have here 569,417. So what is the, the number for the actual number? Okay, so we have an increase there as well. Any questions regarding the library budget from council? Sure, Mayor, go ahead.
I did it with the mayor. Is that most recent number factored into the 1.89% that was discussed at the beginning of the meeting?
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
So this has already been added into that number. Okay, that's good. Any other questions from council? So next is planning and development. We have a total of a 0.78% increase there. And then we have the Conservation Authority as well there. We'll discuss that next. First, we'll look at planning. Any questions for our, Mr. Walsh, our director of planning? Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, the Sustainability Advisory Committee. I see that they have $4,113. 100% expenditures, a new committee. Is that just costing the meetings or is there additional funding for doing other projects through the Sustainability Committee? Because I, I attended the first meeting. I missed the first one. I attended the first one last week. And I was amazed by the people that are on that committee and their qualifications and what they want to do. So I was wondering, is, is that just to pay for the meetings, the committee meetings? Or is there other fundings available like the other committees? Mr. Walsh?
Well, I, I might defer to the Director of Finance for this, but my understanding of that line is really just the per diem rate that the committee members earn per meeting. We'll find a similar figure for the Heritage Advisory Committee as well. See the director, I see the director may, maybe want to add some more details to that statement.
Sorry, Linda, we can't hear you.
Sorry, do you have $1,600 in the budget for miscellaneous expenses for that? $1,600 plus the ordinary.
So there's $1,600. So of that 4,113, there's 1,600 of it is for projects. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
So at Heritage Advisor, you'll see is 11,000 because they have had, they've been in process for many years and they have a number of projects ongoing. And I'm sure that as that committee gets started, if there's certain things that they're going to be doing on a regular basis, they can look at adding that to their budget. I would assume, correct? Just like all the other committees have different projects that they have ongoing. Does that answer your question, Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, but the thing is, is I, at looking at the expertise and where the committee wants to go and with Mr. Walsh and he can either agree with this or disagree, but they're very talented. They have some fantastic things and projects that they're going to be assigned to review, to come to council with and do a lot of research and data. I would like to have that increase from 1,600 to somewheres around 3,000 to 3,500. I think that would give them the buffer for the first year and you'd know where you are. Because after the next, after the next term, it would be a new advisory committee and hopefully they would keep the same members. Because they are talented and very impressive.
Counselor Tadman, go ahead.
I think what's always happened in the past is when a new committee is established, they come before council and tell, but you know, what their plans are, what, what needs they have as far as financial aid. So I would recommend that we leave it at 1,600, but have the representative come and speak to us about the ideas that they want to put forward where they, to justify the money. Because we, we don't know what, what they would need and we could guess, but at this point, we don't know. So it would be nice to know what their thoughts are and what they would like to accomplish with what we could give them for a financial assistance.
Um, and, and I, I agree with that. And as with every advisory committee, the idea is that they can make suggestions to council through their minutes as well. And council can agree or not agree to it. And I think that's the correct way to go about it, especially with a new committee. As things come up, it can come to council in that manner, I would, I believe. If anyone has something different to add to that, please, please go ahead. Counselor Tadman?
I just want to remind everyone that the digital archives, because they had equipment needs, they came before council and we ended up approving their financial needs. So I, I think it, it's just, it's a good way for the public to know also, you know, probably if I wasn't on council, I'd think, what the heck is a sustainability committee and what do they do? And so I think this way it's in the public and everybody knows.
Okay, any other comments on, on, or questions at this point? Counselor Rowley?
Excuse me, thank you. Mr. Walsh, I'd like to ask regarding revenues versus expenditures. With the bumper year that we've had this year, we're only, you know, we're only budgeted 200-plus thousand as far as revenue goes. Yet we're over half a million as far as expenditures go. With all that we've had done this year, should we not have had a bigger increase? I would say in revenue. With that kind of thing, I would, to me, it looks like a, doesn't look like a lot of, a lot of money based on, you know, like I said, what we've seen happening this year. Could you maybe explain that to me? Thank you.
Sure, through the Deputy Mayor, some of the bigger projects we've been dealing with, that revenue was actually accounted for in the year prior, which is the Brighton Meadows subdivision and the Upper Creek subdivision. The fees and charges by law, again, it's been, been passed by council and you'll see some increased revenues. Or at the rate of revenues will, will increase as a result of that updated fees and charges rate. And because of preconsultations on a few projects, I'm expecting there to be probably one or two more subdivisions coming in. So yeah, we'll see some, some significant reviews that way as well. Plus, the fees and charges by law has some revenues at the latter stages of the subdivision execution. So some of the, the final reviews and subdivision agreements, there's some fees associated with that. That, so you'll see some of the projects that are in the more mature stages, you'll see some revenues coming from that as well.
So is it, this is just my understanding, I guess. So at some point, should it be kind of a, you know, kind of a wash at some point? Or is that what we're working towards at some point? That at some point, planning, planning projects will cover the cost of planning? Like the department? Do you see that happening? That we will have more revenue to offset expenditures at some point? So I don't know if we'll ever get to a zero net, but do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, through the Deputy Mayor, I appreciate what you're, you're asking there. And there are some home B decisions and some court decisions when there was a question of costing. But forward to it, that the subdivision review process has a public benefit component too. So the directions received from those higher authorities, so to speak. The direction received by municipalities is that when there's public good drive from the poll process, you know, proving a subdivision that there is public benefit. And public benefit per se does not necessarily get cost back to the developer 100%. But having said that, I have obtained recently some, some additional background work done in other jurisdictions on planning, costing, and some of the more current approaches to doing that. So I'm hoping to bring that in necessarily this year. Since the fees and charges are done, I just got this particular study I'm anxious to get a look at over the, over the holidays. So it'll have to wait till next year when we take a look at that. But I am aware of the desirability to close that gap.
Thank, thank you.
Okay, any other questions on planning? Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, through you, Deputy Chair. In the, on page 34, it says per diem. And we discussed this at one of the council meeting and I didn't know if this is the time to bring it up or another, if it isn't, but I will. You can tell me if it can be brought up somewhere else, that some of the other municipalities within Northumberland County are quite, the per diem rate per meeting is quite substantial, more than ours, almost double. Do you think it's time to look at our per diem rate that we, that we're, for our committees?
Go ahead, Director Wittenfield.
Thank you for that question. Actually, when we've done some research, most other municipalities do not pay their committee members. And so our municipality is one of the few that does.
Thank you. So Counselor LeBlanc, were you referring to actual committees or council and staff members attending meetings?
I don't know if it's council, but when I was in Port Hope and in Tolbert, I was talking with some of the counselors and some of the committee meetings. And some of the meetings, I was using the Committee of Adjustment as one. Like we have one, one, one counselor and number staff, they have eight members that sit on. Like we have one rep, one one counselor and number staff, they have eight members that sit on it. And they get paid anywhere from a hundred and a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars per diem per meeting. And Brighton is at sixty. So that was between, so I don't know which one she's looking at, but that's, that's the ones I was, and that's what I brought up once before, so.
So you were speaking to members of council, so most, I I believe what Director Whitfield is saying, that most communities, they pay their their counselors to attend meetings. But they don't necessarily pay their volunteers, and whereas Brighton does pay their volunteers. So is it volunteers you're looking to increase or is it members of council that you're looking to increase?
I would look more for the volunteers or both. Or leave it as is, because I do not want to hurt the volunteers, because we need volunteers. For all the committees.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions at this point? Um, so also on this page, we have the Conservation Authority. We see a three percent increase in their budget. Any questions or comments? Obviously, they're not here to comment, but any discussion around that budget? Nothing from members of council? Uh, next we have our building services operating budget. It shows obviously zero percent increase because it is meant to cover its costs fully. As far as a cost recovery basis, any questions from council on any of these items?
Building.
Go ahead, Counselor Anderson.
The bulk of the building services revenue is derived from what?
Building permits, I believe.
So I saw a half million dollars on their building permit for last year. On this, on a report that I just received.
So your question, what's your question, Counselor Anderson?
So is this, are these numbers? Building services revenues, are they for two thousand and twenty one? Is it up to date?
Well, that's the budget, so you're wondering what the difference between budget and actual, I think the difference between budget and actual is put into reserve, but perhaps Linda can explain that to us.
But because building services are self sustaining, and we balance surplus and deficits with the building department reserve. And so what happens is, we also write off. Building security, building security deposits if they're not. If they don't have their final grading and their inspections done by the two year period. And so some of those revenues end up in the building department, which end up in the building reserve. And that helps sustain the department. I believe Mr. Walsh explained some of that in his wording. And he he talked about if if we hadn't had those additional revenues, we wouldn't have the substantial amount like quarter million dollar. Building Department Reserve to sustain some of the deficits that we've had in operations over the years. Now with the increase in the the building department. Fees and charges, that's going to assist us a little bit in getting more more revenues for those services. And then hopefully we'll be working more towards a net zero without without using surplus or without using reserves.
So basically. We have the expenditures of four hundred and fourteen thousand here. So you're putting in the the revenue at that same amount, because that's what we're doing, we're netting it. And if there's a surplus, it comes or it goes into the reserve. And if there's a deficit, we pull it from reserve. So even though we may be projecting that we're going to have five hundred thousand in in building permits this year. It's going to say four hundred and fourteen because we're netting the two each other, is that correct? So that we all understand kind of how that works?
That's correct, and just so you know, in this year's budget, we are predicting that we'll pull over ninety thousand dollars out of the reserve. To to reach that net zero. So we're going to have a deficit of just over ninety thousand dollars.
At the four hundred and fourteen. Does that make sense to council or is there further questions on that, Counselor Anderson? Does that answer your question?
No, I'm I'm fine with it for now, keep an, keep an eye on it, thank you.
Any other questions regarding building services? Uh, so next we have bylaw enforcement. We have a seven point four three percent increase. And I believe, I think a few members of council have some questions in this area. We've talked about bylaw enforcement quite a bit and whether or not to increase it. And this would be the time to, I guess, have that discussion. Is there anyone on council that would like to start that off? Go ahead, Mayor.
Negative, Deputy Mayor, I just want to make sure that in this budget, I don't see in the dialogue that we are going to sustain the. Proactive bylaw enforcement through the specifically through the summer. And I'm curious if we intend to enhance that in any way in the budget we see here.
Through you. Yeah, through you, we have kept the contracted services at thirty thousand dollars, we haven't enhanced it at all. And it will be in part funded through the COVID reserve.
Thank you. In this budget, there's, it mentions the MAT tax, the accommodation tax. Are we looking at implementing that this year? And if so, can, what can those funds be used for? Maybe Director Walsh?
Uh, through the Deputy Mayor, yes, the the hope is to bring forward a, Ms. Black, accommodation tax. That would probably coincide when we get our STA licensing bylaw done. That bylaw is still contingent on getting our official plan amendment finally approved at county level. It supports what the zoning law and the licensing law has last drafted and and the execution data tied to the OPA file approval. And then after we begin to issue licenses, we'll know where all these are and the scale of them as well. And one of the conditions of the licensing is that applicants report back annually in terms of their their revenues. And that the municipal accommodation tax would be based on that. We'll have to make other arrangements for hotels and motels and other accommodations. But you know, I think we haven't have, we don't have something fully operational in view on how we'll do that collection. But we'll work together with the Director of Finance and see what we can do within this year.
And and just what what can, are there regulations as far as what that MAT tax can be used for?
Yeah, he did ask that. I don't think Ms. Black, I think section, doesn't matter what section, but I don't think there's really any too many, any constraints on it. We do have to share fifty percent of the revenue collected with tourism destination agency or group. That can be external, usually they are external, because in some places they're already very well established and operating to some extent. Such as the Quanti Tourism Board. And other places such as Prince Edward County, they're setting up a separate corporation to do that destination marketing. And that corporation is solely controlled and owned by the municipality. So that they can probably root some of the revenues instead of fifty percent sharing for additional destination marketing. But now maybe reroot some of that money towards tourism infrastructure, such as roads and bridges. I'm guessing, I don't, I haven't been part of those discussions, of course, but. Looking at the generalities of some of the staff reports and researching the the MAT tax. It appears that that's maybe, I'm guessing a little bit to the general direction where they're going and why they're choosing their own separate corporation for. Sharing the MAT tax with.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Hagman, did you want to comment on that as well? Oh.
Uh, I was just gonna say, from my understanding, the funds have to be used towards marketing initiatives.
Thank you. Um, any more questions on bylaw and. Enforcement in Brighton? Counselor Tadman?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I think the one problem which we're all aware of is. Our Sunday hunting bylaw, but the the hunting in particular that goes on illegally at Salt Point. And there seems to be a problem there that neither the bylaw officer or the. The police can can really do much, because we haven't got a bylaw that. Freeze them up to to go there and and charge these people. And from what I hear from the residents, it isn't our own residents. That are hunters that are are breaking the law there, it's people coming from other areas. So I don't know if we are going to move on that, but that does concern the bylaw officer to a great extent. Because he gets a lot of calls about that. So I'm wondering if anybody has any knowledge how we're going to move forward.
Um, yeah, sure, Mayor, did you want to comment on that? I know there's been a lot of discussions about that.
I wouldn't mind deferring to Mr. Walsh, because I know he's been working diligently on some solutions.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Sure, it's the Deputy Mayor, yeah, we had a bit of a scrimmage there late, late in the year to get some signs up at Salt Point. Being M and R controlled property or own property constraint, getting a sign up there. So it was kind of the last place to to wreck one, but we found some workarounds to have a, at least a temporary sign. And now that we have a permanent sign purchased, but it'll. Won't be erected in the ground, but will be posted on the property. So it looks like we've been finally effective on that, haven't heard anything since that time. But it does point out perhaps that during weekend hours and and early morning and things like that. That we, you know, have full availability of resources. I don't know that we ever will completely, because ultimately going to court on some of these things, relying on witnesses and their expert testimony if they're willing to come forward. So we do have to rely on on someone stepping forward for cause that they believe in. Before can really fully effectively enforce, courts like to have. Impact statements before they really are quick to bring down the hammer. They'll they'll really put a lot of weight on that over the testimony of our our bylaw enforcement officer and our bylaw. To my experience and to my past legal advice given. So, but having said all that, it might be worthwhile looking at what extra resources we might need to be more proactive. As the mayor has pointed out, as Council Tadman has pointed out. So. This budget doesn't reflect that, the commission commissioners are therefore doing the department enforcement that we're forced typically in the summertime. And my understanding is that those particular commissioners officers may not have a background to issue provincial offenses act. Non parking offense type tickets. So if it's council's desire to for staff to take another look at what resources are available for. More proactive bylaw enforcement, then staff can do that.
Uh, thank you, and that was going to be one of my questions, is is there a need for additional bylaw enforcement within the municipality of Brighton? And if so, I guess, how do we, how do we go about that and what and what are the costs going to be? I see a bunch of hands raised, we'll start with Mayor Ostreander.
Negative, Deputy Mayor, just the week before Christmas and between Christmas and New Year's, I took it upon myself to call. Ten mayors from communities of our size and just asked a very simple question, how many bylaw enforcement officers do we have? And the the answer was a, as you can imagine, a very broad range, because the, you know, regardless of the size of the community, they all have their. But we we are running at the bare minimum with one full time bylaw enforcement officer and this part time contingent of of commissioners. We're running at the bare minimum. Our friends to the north are in the same boat, they're running at the bare minimum as well, they have a full timer and a part timer, although I think there's a vacancy. So they're they're maybe in a bit of a worse situation. But there are some communities of our size that have two full time bylaw enforcement officers all year round. And then they triple their 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 force during the tourism months. And these are, you know, large or not large, but they're they're small communities with a large tourist contingent. So tiny Ontario is is the example that I'm thinking of, for example, with a large cottage industry and and so on and so forth. But that doesn't mean that I, I don't think that doesn't, I don't think we need to triple our contingency in the in the tourism months by any stretch. But it may be time for us to start really thinking about a second bylaw enforcement officer to help with the proactive issues. To help with the the hunting issues. At the end of the day, we're we're creating more rules. Asking people to follow more rules and then continuing to employ one bylaw enforcement officer to enforce all those rules. And I, you know, I don't, I don't think that's necessarily fair to Allen, and it's not necessarily fair to our community either. As we, you know, we're we're adding these rules not just because we want to, we're adding them because people are asking us to. So it it may be time for us to consider enhancing our bylaw enforcement department. And I guess I would ask now, what what would that look like and and bring back the plan for for the next meeting?
Uh, thank you, we'll just hear from other members of council and then I I don't think staff can answer this question tonight anyways. But anyone else want to comment on that? Counselor Anderson?
So these are bylaws, these are laws, we talked about hunting and and the M and R, how they're involved. And M and R can monitors fishing, they monitor other hunting in in the province. So when it comes to our shoreline, that's our total responsibility, I'm I'm starting to get the feeling that. It's it's all our responsibility and the M and R and the. I know the police will back back up our bylaws, I don't think they're going to go out there looking for trouble themselves. But I believe they will back up our our bylaws. So I agree, if we have a department that's strong and has enough people involved in it, if we're not going to enhance our policing. Perhaps we can at least enhance our our bylaw department who's going to be doing policing. And. So I, my question is, where's the M and R on this and 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 where's the support, where's our support? As as a municipality, or where's the support for the people that live down there? It's, is it just us or or we've got extra support? And if these folks are coming from out of town and and we're not concerned about the good people of Brighton. How do we deal with that? So are we going to deal with it just with a bylaw, you give it, you know, and us and some signs that should have been up there a long time ago, is my opinion. But because we talked about it a long time ago, but what are we going to do?
Is your question for a member of staff?
Everybody.
But you asked questions about the support that we have, are you?
Well, okay, I'd like to know from the staff, the M and R, what are they doing, are they there to support us or not?
Mr. Walsh, or I see Mayor, you have your hand up, I'm not sure which one of you want to answer that.
I just wanted to make. Who's taught it in mine, is it me?
I just, Counselor Anderson was looking for an answer, I just want to see if we do have an answer to his question and then we'll go right to you, Counselor Tadman.
Okay.
Deputy Mayor, I can maybe answer at a technical level. We did receive a legal opinion prior to the bylaw being passed, with no discharge bylaw being passed. And it does appear that some of these things might overlap per se. But long story short, the our, this was very confident in saying that we have jurisdiction in support of such bylaw. And that our bylaw is about not. Managing wildlife, that's the jurisdiction of ministry, not resources, of course. But the this bylaw is about essentially land use compatibility and noise and public health and safety. Making sure there's good separation of people using. Making sure there's good separation of people using shotguns and from residential uses. Uh, so that's clearly in the preview of the municipality by virtue of different sections of the municipal act. And so that's the obstacles under which the bylaw was passed. So, uh, there is a demarcation role there to, to deputy to. Counsel. And, uh, so, you know, we'll stay in our lane, but in doing so, we'll enforce the bylaw and do so confidently.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Tadman, go ahead. Go ahead.
Am I muted?
No, we can hear you now.
Okay. The M and R doesn't have that many employees and they, they cover a great area. And I do know that they concentrate on certain areas at certain times. Because some people like to do a little bit of illegal fishing or a little bit illegal hunting or whatever. And they get quite surprised that the M and R shows up, but they, it, they can't be. Just solidly at Salt Point at Presqueo. And. When I was, the other point I wanted to make with the bylaw officer, he works days as I assume. And when is, you know, days from. At least daybreak. I don't know what time he starts, but these hunters are going in before daylight. And get, and shooting as soon as they see a spark of light coming out of the sky. And. It, this, we need someone that's going to be there when the illegal activities are happening. So I don't think we can depend always on the M and R. And the other thing, this issue is a safety issue and people are, are really quite afraid. When there's shooting going on that close to their homes. When you have shells. That have landed on your deck, then you need to be worried. And I don't blame them for being upset. So I think we need to do something. I don't know if it's a part-time bylaw to cover those areas. Where the gap is in hours. I don't know, but I, I do know we need to do something.
Thank you. Counselor LeBlanc, did you have your hand up?
Yes, uh, when it comes to the no discharge bylaw, uh, I was. Approached by, uh, Monty, the president of, uh. Presqueo.
Yeah.
Friends of Presqueo.
Not the friends, the, the association.
Association. So, and also the hunters that were breaking the rules ended up by contacting me. And the clerk's department gave me a lot of information, so did the mayor. And I ended up by meeting with them. And, um. And, uh, it was redneck to redneck. So it was a pretty good, straightforward conversation. But one of the things that they told me was, where's your bylaw? Look at your website. Show me your bylaw that we can't go hunt or discharge on salt pole again. So we looked, Alan McGee helped me out and he gave a great explanation why. Because bylaw was pulled because it needed to meet accessibility. At that time, Mr. Street, a deputy clerk, got very sick and the stuff. So the bylaw was never reposted back and we got a number of them that haven't won. Once the six of them found out that there wasn't back to bylaw, I got the vote and everything and showed it to them. They did not go back and they have not been back and they promised me that they haven't. And I shared that text message with the deputy mayor and a few of the counselors and with the planning department and the clerk department. I thanked them very much. The second group that went out. I went to see them and they were, again, they were not from Brighton and they didn't care. And they said. The bylaw's not there. I had photographs of them and I took the pictures of their trucks and everything, but I got my point across to them. But the thing is, and then Mr. Walsh, we talked with Mr. Walsh, I shared the pictures and he wanted to put some temporary signing up and everything. It seemed to have worked, but we also have to tell them no discharge. And he didn't seem to get it. And they're not from Brighton. And this is what got me really upset with them. And I gave him my point. So the signs will be there. And once it gets posted on our website that they can see it, but it has to do with accessibility. And that was one of the problems why they were going. They couldn't find it on our website. And then I, hopefully, once we get all the staff back and everything done, it'll be posted and done correctly. So my question to Mr. Walsh. It, it is what I've said, is it exactly what we've talked about and I've shared with you?
Uh, to Deputy Mayor, yes, I did. That's my recollection as well. And we had a number of exchanges by text over the matter, yes.
So I have no problem going and meeting with these hunters and going on that point if they ever go back again, not whatsoever. Okay, just to be clear. And they know.
Perhaps you can apply for this new job that we're talking about.
Oh, no, I'm busy enough being a counselor.
Anyways, uh, so I, I think, um, most of council is interested in, um, adding or, uh, at least discussing. Adding an additional bylaw officer. Perhaps we might want to know what, uh, what it may cost to add either a full-time or a part-time. Um, but that can be something we can discuss at our next meeting. Mayor Ostrander?
There's also opportunity to contract OPP to enforce our bylaw. I don't know, I have no idea what that costs, but I, I can imagine it would be cheaper to hire our own, quite frankly, but you know. In the, in the world of, you know, present the menu, let's present the menu.
Thank you. So that can be a discussion for our next meeting. Any other questions or comments at this point? So next is economic development. Um, we have, uh, here it looks like a minus seven point nine seven, but I believe grants and aid. Hasn't been added to this, is that correct?
Correct.
Uh, so once we add that in, it probably brings us back up. I'm trying to remember again, I was looking at my notes, what exactly we agreed to with grants and aid. Perhaps Linda is able to give us that number to tell us what, um, our most updated number is for this item. But I believe they have been added into the original number you, or the number you gave us tonight, I'm sure. So, um, if, if you're able to look that up, but that's okay. If there's any questions from, uh, council on the, um, economic development budget tonight. Counselor Rowley, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I'm looking on page thirty-eight Ben. Fourth little paragraph down regarding the Applefest committee and the intent to hire a contractor. Although Applefest hasn't met, both the deputy mayor and I sit on that committee. Is that something at some point that, uh, we can get, uh, more staff support from now that our economic development department is, seems to be expanding a wee bit? Just asking.
Um. Yeah, I, sorry, through the deputy mayor, I haven't put a lot of thought. Into that specifically yet. If it does work out that we have. Someone a little more full-time in the department, then maybe that's a. You know, common sense synergy we can make, but, uh, we have left the funding in there to hire. Contractor as well. So we should be covered from a pretty high level of support.
Thank you.
Um, any other questions from council? Uh, Linda, did you have that number for grants and aid? What was the total? Sorry, sorry, I can't hear you.
Seventy-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Okay, so that number can be added in there. I think that was it for that. Any other, anything else from council before we move on? Okay, so we're good with that department. Thank you, Ben. Next, we have environmental services operating budget. Um, we have the information here. Obviously, this is, um, supported by the, the, um, the rate payer, not the taxpayer, so it's zero percent. Um, but we still like to take a look at these expenditures. Is there anything from council? Any questions from council? Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes, through you, Deputy Mayor. What is this? When I look at this distribution and the operation, does it, this have to do with all sampling? And, uh, sampling of all the water, as part of Waukunton and the Ontario Water, Clean Water Act and the Waste Water Act. Uh, does this have to, this budget, does it have to do with all the sampling procedures that have been approved by the province and everything?
Who would like to answer that question? Thank you, Mr. Parkinson.
For you Deputy Mayor. Absolutely. We're legislated to do all the sampling for water and wastewater. So it's included in the budget. It is year over year. There's been no changes there.
Thank you. Counselor LeBlanc?
So through you Deputy of Mayor, so to Mr. Parkinson, so if there's any changes. To the sampling procedures or the quantity of samplings that would be taking. That would put the counselors at risk under the Water Resources Act, you would notify the council?
Uh, through you Deputy Mayor, uh, we wouldn't let that happen. Um, the environmental manager. Uh, is very well-versed in water and wastewater and required sampling. Uh, we have a good relationship with the ministry and that just simply wouldn't happen. Uh, because the cost of sampling is so small versus any kind of consequence from those actions.
Thank you. Any other questions from council regarding this budget? I don't see any. So that completes, uh, the, the review of the operational budget at this point. So, uh, what we would do at this point is, uh, look towards our next meeting, which I cannot remember when it is right now. I think it's a couple of weeks away. And, uh, for the next meeting, um, are we able to have these sheets updated or, or some sort of summary updates? So that we can look at with all the numbers and, um, also with the requests from tonight. Um, and then we can take another look at it at, at that time.
For you Deputy Mayor. So we do have two weeks. It's the, the twenty-fourth is our next meeting. And, uh, why don't we bring back a second draft budget, which means everything will be updated at that point?
That sounds good. Any final questions from, uh, staff or sorry, from council at this point for staff? Counselor Rowley?
Thank you. Um, we have added a few dollars. Linda, did you have a total as to what we have added tonight?
Twenty-three thousand.
Sorry, how much was that?
I didn't get it.
Twenty-three thousand.
Plus part-time bylaw.
I can't, I can advise council that, uh, full-time, like, full-time, all-year bylaw officer. Would probably cost somewhere around eighty thousand dollars when you count the benefits and, and payroll taxes, et cetera. Um, if you had a bylaw officer for a part year, then of course we could, you know, like prorate that. Um, if you want to do part-time, of course, that will change a bit again, but just so you know, that's approximately how much it is for a year. Um. And then, of course, that would increase annually as, as they go through a grid. So that would be our lowest amount.
So tonight we've added approximately twenty-three thousand plus we, uh, the potential for, um, up to eighty for a bylaw and, uh, officer. Both of which we will discuss further at the next meeting. Mayor Ostrander?
Uh, I don't, I don't want to argue math with the financial person, but, um, we added eighteen for. Right by the Bay Stormwater and we added five for Christmas lights and five for washroom. So my math tells me we've added twenty-eight. I'm not, I'm not an advanced mathematician.
I did add in, I did add in some COVID funding for the washrooms. To make it easier.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. And at this point, these numbers are approximate and that's why we're going to ha, take the time to get our second draft so we can look at real, real numbers. Uh, Counselor Rowley, I think you had your hand up again. Are you done?
Mine was the same as the mayor, so.
Thank you.
You've got it under control. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so, uh, next on our agenda is question period. Do we have anyone, uh, wanting to ask questions?
No, I don't. I didn't have anybody email me.
Thank you. And there's no in-camera session, so. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Does it matter? I just need, uh, a moment a second here for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Anderson and Counselor LeBlanc, all those in favor? And we're adjourned. Thank you everyone. See you on the twenty-fourth.